Good evening, everybody. This is a little intimidating, I do have to say. Welcome to our regular board meeting for the Board of Trustees. I'm Stephanie George. I represent the Bremerton Central Kitsap Area. With us tonight, with my fellow colleagues, is Gina Steiner, representing North Kitsap, Marwan Cameron, also representing Bremerton Central Kitsap, and Eric Sizney, representing South Kitsap. Eric Fong is not with us this evening. He's traveling. He represents Bainbridge Island. For those of you who may have been following along, we did have a special meeting earlier this evening that was conducted in executive session. We had two items. We covered both related to personnel matters, related to the library director. We will be reporting out. We didn't take action in that meeting, but we will be reporting out that earlier activity in under old business later. So with that, I would transition to somebody to read the mission statement, but it looks like it's my turn to read the mission statement, which is to inspiring our community to dream more, learn more, do more, and be more. With that, Jason, would you like to do welcome and introductions?
Yes. Good evening and welcome to our board meeting. I'm just going to introduce my leadership team from my left to right. And so we have Jeannie Allen, Director of Strategy and Communications; Shannon Peterson, Deputy Director of Public Services; Dan Baer, who's a Deputy Director and Chief Financial and Operating Officer; Tammy Jeffries, our Executive Assistant; Wendy Kyle, Executive Director of the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation; then we have Lucretia Robertson, who's the Human Resources Director, and also the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And last, but certainly not least, we have Mike Rose, who's the Director of Facilities and Information Technology. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jason. Any additions or changes to the agenda from my colleagues? Hearing none. We would open it for public comment. We don't have any public comment this evening, though we look forward to having public comment when people want to join us in this very big room. So we will move then forward to the consent agenda, approval of the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion of the Board of Trustees with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired, items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request. Tonight's consent agenda is fairly routine. It has the minutes of the December 20th, 2022 meeting. It includes a payment of December bills for December 2022, including payroll and benefits and the blanket voucher bills. It also includes the final state auditor's report. We did hear about that report last meeting under just oral reporting. I will remind us all that we did, in fact, receive clean audits with zero findings in either the area of financial accountability or general accountability to our integrity and openness as a government agency. So that was fantastic, but the full reports are there for review. And also the surplus library materials to be withdrawn from the collection for December 2022 of 2,406 items. If there is no item to be removed, I'll hear a motion from my colleagues to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Gina. Is there a second?
A second.
Good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda is approved. Following that, we have presentations, reports, and briefings, starting with Board of Trustees members. Eric, would you like to go first?
I don't have anything to present at this meeting.
Anybody else? There's no report from members. The Finance Committee was held before this meeting at 5:00, and we were looking at a couple of items. Dan will be going over the year-end financial statements here momentarily, which we reviewed in the Finance Committee meeting, and we also discussed the capital budget, which we will also be hearing later in the agenda. Dan, would you like to give the finance report?
Sure. Thanks, Stephanie. So the key feature of the final financial report for 2022 is Page 2 of the monthly financial report Key Indicators. The first two lines under expenditures are the reference, the operation plan, and those are the savings that we look at to fund our capital projects for the following year. So we ended the year with about 1.2 million in cash surplus and savings in our operation plan, primarily due to savings from vacant positions that were not filled. We're not in full operations yet. We're moving in that direction. Our cash for operations month-end balance in December was about 4.5 million. That seems like a large number. We need about 3.5 million minimum to make it between January and April when we receive our first installment of our property tax distributions. For instance, in January, we'll probably spend about 1.2 million, but we will only take in 50,000 in revenue in property taxes. So we have to have a healthy balance going into the year, and we do. So that's all I have, unless there's any questions on the financial report. We'll be talking a little bit more about that a little later, and we're talking about the capital projects.
Any questions for Dan? Most everybody was in the Finance Committee meeting, so we had an opportunity to review. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is the library director's report. Jason?
Sorry. Good evening. Have to get used to engaging the mic. Not a lot for you today. I wanted to really give you a recap of what our investments, our planned investments for the year, and then an update on our strategic plan. And so this year, we're really aimed at sort of sustainability for the library, and we're aimed at just firming up our infrastructure. And really firstly, with information technology, we mentioned in the, when we talked about our capital investments, that we're going to be upgrading PCs, both staff and public PCs, and then we're migrating to a new website. So that's taken a lot of our attention the first quarter. And then updating our print management systems. And also, we're looking to get out into the community, resuming community outreach, looking to expand book lockers if possible. We've got lots of research to do on that, to see if it's viable, but those are plans for 2023. And then upgrading various physical plants. And so we have a few capital projects that are going to require our attention this year. And then funding. We're looking at extending our funding base through endowments and hosting donor events. And then lastly, it's just getting back to the basics. Our normal staple programs to the library, One Book, One Community, and Summer Learning, of course, which most of the public knows well, we'll be looking at resuming those programs in their entirety, and some of them will be, you know, rebranding a little bit. And so want to turn your attention to the strategic plan. So we start this process in September, and really even before that, we started planning out what our next strategic iteration of our strategic plan would be. So previous to that, we had been on a year-to-year strategic plan, and just through the first year and talking through finances and talking through the direction of the library and what the projected sources of income and, again, back to this theme of sustainability, we think it would be prudent to engage in a five-year strategic plan so we can take into account any future financial situations that could pose a risk to us. So for the time being, we are planning a strategic plan that will take us from 2023 to 2028. So the first steps, as you know, were to engage in a consultant, and we've done that and hired Eric Mead to be our strategy consultant. And we had an initial kickoff with the board and leadership team in September, where we discussed, you know, various themes from the previous strategic plan and talked about what we thought would be a good route to take in terms of getting a new strategic plan done. And then we had Mr. Mead come back and engage with leadership team to do a deeper dive to figure out, again, what our thoughts were on the previous plan and where we thought we saw the library going in the future. And then on All Staff Day, we had Mr. Mead come to present at All Staff Day to take staff through a process where we could gather some data from them, get some ideas, and sort of dreamscape on what is essentially their ideal library for the future. And so he took everybody on what's called a hero's journey. And then post All Staff Day, we engaged in an all-staff survey where we gathered more data on reflections about current services, practices, and things that people wanted to see in the future. And so we're going to pair that data with data that will be coming out of the Community Needs Assessment. We'll take all of that, and we will assimilate that data and also meet with community partners. Our next step is to do a deeper dive with the community, with a community listening session with our relevant community partners on February 16. And so on that day, we hope to meet with community partners, leadership, some board members, and key staff, and we'll take a half-day deep dive into figuring out from the community what they expect of the library, their experiences around engaging in library services, and really what they see as the greatest needs in the community are in the next few years. And then after that, we'll be doing some work with staff. There'll be some smaller sessions where staff will have opportunities. Even before this community listening session, we have an opportunity to have staff gather in smaller groups to not only pick people who they think might be best to represent staff in those sessions and sort of listen and bring those ideas back to staff and their branches, so we can get data from there. And then we'll get together in March with leadership and board, and we'll, you know, unravel all that data, unpack it, and then that will take us to our last steps, which is to put together our SWOT analysis, all of the data from that process, and have a final product that we hope to unveil to the board in May. And so those are our next steps in the journey for getting a strategic plan in place, and that is my report. Any questions?
I was just curious if you know off the top of your head how many computers you will be replacing for the patrons?
Yeah, you know what? I have to turn that over to Mike Rose, our Director of Information Technology, and let him.
Unfortunately, I do not have a solid number for you yet. We're going to be receiving quotes from our primary vendor, Lenovo, shortly, but I have to get with my IT team and determine what server-side hardware we might be required in addition to staff and public-facing computers that need to be replaced this year. So I can come back with additional details at a future meeting if you'd like.
That'd be great. I just think it's really, I think it's a good goal for access. You know, we still have a lot of people who don't have access to technology without the library system, so I was happy to see that. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jason on the update of the strategic plan? Jason, on the 16th, are we looking for one, this one half-day session for community listening? Is that the plan there?
That's correct.
Okay. And both that day, as well as, it looks like we have a session specific to the board, but definitely on February 16th, there's an opportunity for board members to join that community session as well?
Yes, both in February and March.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, Jason. Their next item on the agenda is correspondence. We have none, so that moves us into old business. First item of old business is the action to renew the library director's employment contract. I'm going to precede that formal action with a bit of narrative, proceeding that to kind of summarize what the board has been doing in support of considering Jason's continued employment with the library. The board has a governance responsibility to ensure that KRL delivers value and service to the community that provides us their support. And the effective management of the library director is really our primary means in which we carry out this stewardship responsibility. In hiring Jason to succeed longtime Director Jill Jean, this board invested considerable time in the due diligence of determining the most essential criteria for our search. Those of you who are present for tonight's meeting may recall, this did include a community survey, which we received responses from more than 1,100 people who had something to say about what they wanted to see in their library leader, including many employees of KRL. At the top of that list was someone who could cast a vision for all that the library could be. Additional criteria included someone who could expertly steward numerous, diverse, sometimes competing stakeholders. And as a board, it was also important that we recruit somebody with solid business acumen to navigate what is a complicated and very restrictive funding environment with which we work to advance the mission of KRL. But most importantly, the library director, we wanted their ability to create a positive work environment for our more than 200-plus employees, each one who's essential in delivering the mission of KRL to the communities it serves. While the prospects were daunting, to say the least, I'm proud to say that we were successful in recruiting a capable, seasoned leader to the position, one with more than 20 years of progressive library experience, including seven years with a well-known and reputable large-market public library, being the Chicago Public Library. Now, after a year in the role, we are pleased to say that upon Jason's positive performance evaluation, the board unanimously supports renewal of Jason's employment contract for another year. However, before we take official action on that matter, I'd like to share with our attendees what Jason's performance evaluation entailed. To aid the process, the board did opt to engage the services of a third-party independent consultant to facilitate a more comprehensive performance evaluation than has been done in the past. This consultant, Fred Papst, was the same individual who aided the board in its national search in the successful recruitment and hiring, Jason Driver. In conducting the evaluation, the board sought candid input from both members of the board, who Jason reports to, and his leadership team, his own direct reports, who are much closer to the work than we are and have a very different line of sight than we do at times. So of course, to aid that 360-degree view and to get the level of candor we hoped for, it was important that we engage this third party, who could both facilitate that information gathering in a trusted manner, but also package it back to the board in a way that offered anonymity to the individual participants. To this, I want to say thank you to everybody who participated in the review. It's incredibly important, and it came under a very tight timeline, right up against a holiday weekend. So we want to extend our thanks from the board, particularly to the leadership team, for taking and making time to participate in that process. In both layers, the board sought input related to key areas of the director's responsibilities as identified in his position description, but also his impact in creating a positive work environment and culture in support of KRL's greatest asset, its staff. At our special meeting earlier this evening, the board received a full report from Fred validating Jason's solid first-year performance as our leader, including some following excerpts. Jason demonstrated consistent, confident leadership across library operations. He was frequently cited as a good model of leadership in his consistency and his accountability and his accessibility, that he's collaborative and he's decisive and he's nonjudgmental. He's curious and he's open to others' input and seeks to understand the context as he's making decisions. And the feedback recognized that it was a challenging time to bring Jason to the community, not only because he joined Kitsap from Chicago, but he was doing so during a time of COVID and really unresolved collective bargaining issues to step into. And yet uniformly, he was validated for being able to assist KRL in finding a path forward through all of that. More work, of course, is yet to come in the completion of a new strategic plan, but he's also really put the library on the map in being out with a strong community presence, which definitely will be important as we go forward as well. Overall, Jason had a very productive first year and a relatively smooth transition to I'd like to invite, let's say, given this performance, the board did discuss renewing Jason's contract for another year that would start February 1 through January 31. We also discussed the need to maintain our investment, given the unique and complex nature of this role, the competitive recruiting environment nationally, particularly for leaders of color. To this end, the board discussed, but we did not take formal action, on a proposal to offer Jason an increase in the new employment contract to his current base salary that would be inclusive of a 3% COLA and a 3% STEP increase. This proposal is consistent with what has been offered to other members of the leadership team pending that they meet or succeed their performance expectations for the year. Given the validation of Jason's performance, I will invite other members of the board to comment on both the process and the outcomes from their perspective before we move for action on this item.
Very well stated, Stephanie. Thank you. I guess, being the board member with the most tenure here other than you, I'll take the opportunity to speak first. I was just, it was an enlightening experience, and I think that the leadership team's comments were pretty consistent with the board's perspective, and that was validating in the review process. And it was a challenging time when we hired Jason, not only the collective bargaining agreements, but we have some facilities in need of repair, and we've had quite a bit of transition in the Board of Trustees members themselves. It's difficult to establish yourself when you have a high turnover rate in your leadership. So throughout that, Jason has maintained a strong community presence. He's very clear in his communications and providing information in written reports to the board and his staff, and he's accessible. We heard consistent comments about his genuineness and authenticity, and I think those are great leadership qualities. So it was affirming to read all of your comments, and as I told Jason in our meeting earlier, congratulations on a successful first year, and we're very grateful to have you here.
Thank you.
Well, I'm almost too new to make much of a comment, but based on my past library experience, I worked in Seattle Public for years, I'm really impressed by Jason's performance and what I've seen so far. So congratulations, and I think it's going to be a great year coming ahead.
I'm going to note before Marwan jumps in. Eric, you were on the search committee, so I think you do have some context to comment.
You know, for me, I've been a part of this process for another organization, and this was quite comprehensive, more comprehensive than I'm used to. In looking at that and evaluating it and hearing the feedback from the board and from the leadership, for being less than a year, you got a lot accomplished. You did a lot of good work, especially in the realm of culture building, which I think is tremendously important. For me, you know, I also operate as the Executive Director here in this county, and I actually learned about you through other people because you made it so intentional on meeting other community leaders and making sure that you got the lay of the land, but it was genuine. And so that's how I found out about you, which is a testament to the effort and to the outcome that you were looking for in that. So I look forward to seeing you do more in this next year. I also appreciate the work on the Community Needs Assessment and taking a leadership role in that for the Kitsap Regional Library, because it is a linchpin of the community throughout the county, so it's tremendously important. And for me personally, it is good to see an African-American male lead a county with such diverse, well, kind of diverse everything. It's very, it's very different depending on where you go, and navigating that and building a sense of inclusiveness from each of the libraries is a testament. During the Staff Day, I spent some time in the MLK Library downtown and spoke individually with different staff, and they all had wonderful things to say about your leadership and inclusiveness and open-door policy. And yeah, it's just been really positive, so I wanted to acknowledge that and just say that I'm looking forward to year two.
Thank you.
And thank you.
If there's not further comment on Jason's leadership, I'll take a motion on the action item.
I motion to renew Library Director Jason Driver's employment contract beginning February 1, 2023, for the 12-month period ending January 31, 2024, inclusive of a 3% COLA increase and a 3% STEP increase to his current salary base.
A second there.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jason, on a successful first year, and it just means the next year is even, you know, more work.
No, thank you. If I could just take a couple, yeah, less than a minute. I really want to thank the leadership team. You know, it was a daunting task to be able to come over 2,000 miles and take a new job in a pandemic and such a challenging time, but I would not have been able to be successful without this group here. They held me and taught me and nurtured me and gave me all the information to prop me up and make me look good and to just make sure that this library is successful. It wasn't about me, it's about all of us and our success is here. So, you know, I just really want to extend, and I would hope they know this, but I want to extend a bit of gratitude to this team here because this is who was here before I got here, and this is the reason why I came here, is because this team was attractive to come to because of their knowledge and experience and what they've given to this library system. So I really want to give a big thanks to the leadership team for helping me to be successful, and I'm looking forward to the second and hopefully third, fourth, fifth years and beyond. It's a really great place to be in. Lastly, I wanted to just say thank you to the board for hiring me and believing that this was a job that I could do. I am not at all resting on my laurels. I think there's a lot I could do better. There's a lot of work to do, and I'm looking forward to digging into that and being a better library director and making Kitsap Regional Library. It's already the best library system in Western Washington, but we're going to do even more to continue the growth and the excellent service that this staff has brought to this county from years past before I've gotten here. But I want to thank the board also for supporting me and believing in me, and I'm looking forward to digging in with all of you in the years to come. So thank you.
Thank you. On to new business. Item 10.1 is related to the adoption of a capital budget. Dan, do you want to provide any context for this as we move forward?
I do. Thank you. I referenced in the December financial report that we ended the year with a cash surplus in the operating plan of about 1.2 million. That is the primary, if not the only, source of funding that we have for capital projects. The property tax revenue that we receive is enough to do regular maintenance on our buildings, but it's not enough to do capital projects. So we have a few projects here in front of you that total just under $1 million to replace antiquated building access controls. We have three HVAC units at Sylvan Way, our home branch, that need to be replaced. Two are servicing the server room and IT, which is very important to keep cool. Materials budget, we want to try to maintain a 10% materials budget ratio to our overall operating budget, and this helps us achieve that. We're looking at implementing a print management and payment We're looking at implementing a print management and payment system this year. We need to replace computers, public, both public and staff, and other IT equipment this year, so we have about $100,000 slated for that. We're going to update our branch signage, and we have some miscellaneous furniture and equipment that we have to update or replace in all of our nine branches. Any questions on that list, or?
I have a question. Do any of these capital projects have ongoing expenses?
No.
Okay.
No, they do not. In fact, the HVAC replacements will actually save us some money, they'll be more efficient than the ones we have already, but nothing is ongoing for ongoing costs for this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions of Dan? I wish it was a more exciting list, but. But it's amazing how unexciting nearly $1 million of maintenance can be, so. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the capital budget.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Gina, a second?
A second.
So, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2023-01 to amend the adopted 2023 expenditure budget by $964,990 to fund 2023 capital projects as outlined by Dan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great. So, the next item under new business is really what we're considering, the first reading of revision to the bylaws for the Board of Trustees. We also reported on this in that the board did at its educational study session take some time, as we were discussing culture for the board, but took some time to both look at the bylaws and provide some input and commentary on things that might be changed. These bylaws have not been updated since May 2018. After that review and discussion, what you're seeing here is my attempt to incorporate the feedback into a first draft red-line version. I'm bringing it back in this format for two reasons. One, it's our commitment as a board, we talked about this as part of our culture, to be as supremely transparent as we could be, so we certainly wanted to make the red-line version available for others to comment, and also to give the board an opportunity to see what those changes might look like in practicality in a draft red-line version. So, tonight, what we're going to do is see if there's any comments or further discussion and thoughts about proposed bylaw changes, and then we will bring those back in February for action. So, with that, is there any commentary or discussion on the bylaws?
I don't have any. I reviewed them earlier, and I, we talked about them pretty extensively at our education meeting, so I don't have any substantive comments. Thank you.
Everything I've seen here looks logical, and I would approve it when it comes to him.
I think we made some slight changes. The most significant change that we probably made in here is clarifying, because it was quite confusing when we were looking at it, is that Jason really does serve as the secretary to the board, but it is in an ex officio capacity, and we did make clear that his ex officio role was non-voting in this case. So, that, besides the proposed change of order to the way we conduct our regular board meeting business, was the most substantive of the recommended changes. So, given that, we will bring this item back in February for formal action. And that, my friends, brings us to the end of the agenda, minus the last item of housekeeping, which is to really identify that our next regular meeting is February 28th, right here in this building. With that, I will adjourn the meeting, and actually use the gavel.